... meeting Monday, October 27, 2014. Roll call please.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordy Egleton.
Here.
Gary Yellingson is excused. Chester Norakis.
Here.
Roger Sprague is excused. Henry Quant.
Here.
And Wes Ryan.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. One nation. In the business world. With your counsel, with your indulgence, I'd like to make a change to the agenda. Agenda item H is inconsistent with a notice that was distributed allowing for an opportunity to provide public comment associated with ordinance 2014-27 under Agenda Item Number 15. So if you would amend the agenda under item H, we will add an opportunity for the public comment on proposed ordinance 2014-27 establishing a tax on the sale of marijuana and marijuana-infused products in the city of Lincoln City. That's all right?
Yes.
With that, then, we'll move to public comments. Public comments, this is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item. If you desire your comments to be part of the public record of a specific public hearing item, then you need to wait for that agenda item to be called. Otherwise, you are free to comment at this time. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their time to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. As you come forward, please speak right into the microphone and state your name for the record. We have John Force.
Hi, everybody. I'm John Force, 1820 Northeast West Devils Lake Road. I'm the founder-director of the Nell Scott Reef Big Wave Classic entering our 10th anniversary event. I am proud of what has been achieved over the last 10 years and feel a sense of pride having made Nell Scott Reef and Lincoln City famous as a byproduct of my passion for surfing. I started the event in 2005 with my own money and many months of work with the support of the local motels and casino. That first event, I awarded $20,000 of my own money for the purse. I had never felt such a sense of community in my life with everyone pitching in to make it work. Then the recession hit, making sponsorships almost impossible to enlist, but we endured somehow and have continued the event for 10 years. I might add that during that period, I applied for a grant from the VCB and was issued a check signed by David Hawker from the city, which was bounced by Sandy Pfaff. In 2010, we became part of the Big Wave World Tour with promises that financial help was on the way. That financial help never materialized, and we struggled for three more years before we quit the tour last year after the latest round of unmet promises. Last year, in response to locals' wishes for a more relaxed event that they would be more qualified for, I started a second event, the Nell Scott Reef Invitational, and applied for a second permit besides the original professional event. After being advised of the Big Wave World Tour shortcomings and unmet promises, Sandy Pfaff and David Hawker issued a permit to the group anyway, leaving three events trying to run a contest in the same conditions which some years never get one contestable swell. Last season, we never got a swell for the original Nell Scott Reef Big Wave Classic, but in January, we were able to run the Nell Scott Reef Invitational in perfect surf. It was a very relaxed event based on video and photos judged by the crowd at the awards banquet at the Surf Tides after the event. Another swell appeared in March, which would have been our contest swell for the ninth edition of the Nell Scott Reef Big Wave Classic, but due to the prejudiced decisions of Sandy Pfaff and David Hawker, was given to this California corporation run by a Portlander who has never been on the reef and was dismissed from Behemoth years before. Their contest ran amid much fanfare with a $50,000 purse pledge during the buildup, as was the purse for their previous events in Chile and Mavericks. At the awards ceremony for their Nell Scott event, only $12,000 was awarded, and $38,000 mysteriously disappeared, seemingly making Lincoln City a party to fraud. Before last year's contest, I had several conversations with Dick Anderson about the event, and during one of those conversations, he said I was blocking events to Lincoln City, leaving me flabbergasted. In the nine years of my event, we have attracted at least 10,000 people personally and several million via Internet, not to mention the media coverage, including the New York Times through Russian sports magazines and exposure on regional, international TV, and worldwide film festivals. But I am blocking events. I guess promoting mine is blocking others. And how many tourists in heads and beds has Dick brought to town? How many tourists has his BRD issue bringing to town or left them looking elsewhere? After my last contest, Sandy Pfaff assured me that my priority permit was safe for the next contest, although I heard through the rumor mill that a permit was issued and tried to contact Sandy and was told that Debbie Mamioli was now doing the permits. I can't contact her, and she said a permit had been issued. I requested a meeting to get this resolved and was met with her and the city attorney, Apicello, who told me that the city wasn't responsible for what their employees said and that now the permits were issued on a first-come, first-served basis. Apparently, the powers that be decided to change the criteria, and that now my nine years of investment into creating the event was second fiddle to this Portland promoter and California company that had already hoodwinked Lincoln City into being an accomplice to the missing $38,000. Fast forward a couple of weeks ago, and I read in the paper that Dick Anderson proposed a retroactive wage increase for David Hawker and a salary increase for the same city attorney, Apicello, who burned me out of my priority permit. So Dick is proposing wage increases when there is still $38,000 unaccounted for. I might add that the rival organization, the Big Wave World Tour, announced their events for the season, and Nell Scott Reef isn't even on their schedule, yet they hold the prime permit. Sounds to me like they are blocking events at Nell Scott. I hope that in the future, when there is a new unbiased mayor, city manager, and director of the VCB, we can work together to maximize the Nell Scott Reef Big Wave Classic's exposure to the world to showcase all of Lincoln City's assets. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Warner.
My name is Jerry Warner, and I live at 1233 Lakewood. Tonight, I primarily want to discuss ORS Chapter 457 and ORS 758. I am sure some of you have never even read these statutes. If you had read them, I'm sure you wouldn't have voted the way you have. You have spent millions of dollars on projects that are questionable on meeting the intent of urban renewal statutes. The D River Underground is a good example of a ridiculous decision by this council. ORS 457 states that "The purpose of urban renewal is to improve or eliminate blighted areas by reason of deteriorated faulty planning and unsafe structures." It does not appear this project meets the standards of the statute. The underground cause in 457 was intended to be used when a project calls for a complete rebuilding of an area, including streets. The legislature passed ORS 758.210, which allows for undergrounding by forming a district. This is what the city should have used for that project. When you drive down Highway 101 in the D River area, you should be watching the traffic and not looking up at the power lines. But if you do decide to turn into the park, you have an unobstructed view of the ocean except for the city siren. Let's take a look at what it costs taxpayers. The Urban Renewal Agency said the cost was to be about $1 million to do that undergrounding. Right now, to date, the cost of the new traffic signals is approximately $330,000 plus approximately $150,000 in engineering costs. The cost is now up to a half a million dollars, and the project for the underground hasn't even started. This project could cost taxpayers $2 to $2.5 million before it's completed. And not one dime, not one dime of that project will be returned to the taxpayers and increased tax base. It's just for looks, period. No return to the taxpayer. You have taken over $10 million off the tax rolls and property you've purchased. Through urban renewal, you have also taken over $10 million out of educational funds for students. You, as a council, are still subsidizing a retail business in TAF, which is in direct competition with other retailers. You have spent taxpayer money of $2.5 million on property in the Village of the Cascade Head, plus another million dollars of urban renewal money on a pump station to serve the property. The city is now in direct competition with other developers. You have purchased another home for city employees' use and are now in the real estate business. According to May 9, 2012, issue of the News Guard, the cost per Lincoln City staffer was $86,162 in their paper. The average salary of the workforce in Lincoln City is approximately $20,000, according to a state publication. It really makes a lot of sense to subsidize city employees when they're making four times what the average employee makes here. This council has favored building a bigger and bigger government over providing the necessary infrastructure in the city for new streets and improved streets. This is the only city I've seen where the city manager controls the council. In the 30-plus years I have lived here, I have never seen a council that has failed the citizens as much as this council. The action of this council is totally disgrace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Mr. Hunt.
I live at 17596 Cascade Estates Drive, Bend, Oregon. No, no, that's a mistake. Actually, I live at 1587 Northwest 39th Street. I just got carried away with myself there. That's where we want to live. My topic tonight is Lincoln City's recent survey. My opinion, shared by many others, the recently released City of Lincoln City survey is fatally flawed. This survey appears to be produced by the unknowing, lacking serious survey development skills. Professionals in the survey world with clear direction should be used to create and conduct this type of survey, i.e., a third party. The questions that were presented on the survey were basically motherhood and apple pie type questions. Let me give you an example. Low city taxes. Who would indicate not important? Another example, family-wage jobs. Who would vote no? Stump question. Hundreds of part-time residents and people who pay property taxes here are being discriminated against by excluding them from participating in the survey. Because the survey was, as I was told by a city employee, only sent to registered voters in Lincoln City. Big mistake. Every person owning property in Lincoln City should have the opportunity to respond, including all renters who literally, who not very often understand, pay property taxes via their rent payments. They'll see them increase probably January 1 again after the tax bills are paid. Maybe the best way would have been to survey all city folks paying water bills. I'm alleging this is a stack-the-deck survey with conclusions which can be manipulated to be what you want them to be. This survey is an example of having the cat babysit the canary. I can't believe any of you read the survey proposal before agreeing to involve only a chosen few. The last survey, way back when, indicated respondents wanted first and foremost jobs and street improvements. Well, now, did that happen? I don't think so. Rhetorical question. What evidence can any of you produce that this survey, this survey, the one that was just done, will have different results? Recall this flawed, mindless survey. It should be damaging to your political health and welfare. Oh, yes, an apology is also in order.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Burger Trader.
Schroder.
Schroder.
My name is Margaret Schroder. I'm an attorney with Black Helterline. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of Citizen Joy Wilson, who resides at 1817 Northeast 7th Street in Lincoln City. I also represent the Lincoln City Vacation Home Association and the Oregon Association of Vacation Rental Owners. I am here tonight to urge each and every one of you to vote no on ordinance numbers 2014, 21, 22, and 23. Quite frankly, the only people who are going to benefit from these ordinances are the lawyers, and the way these ordinances were written are just begging for lawyers to get involved. My firm has reviewed these ordinances, and we have significant concerns about their lawfulness. These ordinances unfairly discriminate against recent and new arrivals and force longtime homeowners and taxpayers to make a horrible decision under threat of unreasonable penalties. On their face, these ordinances deprive property owners of important rights and significant income. Furthermore, enacting these ordinances now, before it is known exactly what areas of the city will be affected by these new vacation rental zones, is asking for owners to line up and file expensive lawsuits. Now, while you may not care about the threat of lawsuits or about the impact on non-resident homeowners, however, the potential impact on your long, full-time, year-round residence is dire. Whether you want to admit it or not, this town's economy depends on the income and taxes that your enterprising homeowners generate through vacation rentals. There is no guarantee that the loss of rental home availability as a result of these ordinances won't drive tourists to other destinations on the coast, which will result in the loss of income and taxes here, which in turn can impact and result in the loss of city services here. And there's no guarantee that these ordinances won't severely depress home values on all residential property in this city, which affects everyone who lives here, not just the folks who own second homes here. Unfortunately, this is what's going to happen. Families who have made their dreams of owning a vacation home in Lincoln City possible by responsibly renting their properties and maintaining their properties in good condition are going to be pushed out of the city. When people can't pay their mortgages, the result is bank-owned, abandoned homes, left to rot, and attract vagrants. Businesses shutter, and local jobs are lost. Is this the outcome you want? Who then do you think is going to come and move to Lincoln City to buy up these properties? And how do you expect to lure new businesses here to the city to replace the loss of the local jobs that these vacation rentals generate when people flee the city? It's my understanding that these ordinances are Mayor Anderson's planned legacy, but his term ends on December 31. For those of you who will remain on the city council, do you want your legacy to be associated with lawsuits, vacant homes, boarded-up businesses, and depressed market values? It all boils down to the fact that these ordinances are a solution looking for a problem. Noise, trash, and parking are already regulated and easily addressed by the city's police and enforcement departments, not to mention the fact that your own police force already stated that short-term rentals are not the source of the problems with rentals in this town. This is why Bend, a few weeks ago, stayed plans to enact similar ordinances, and why Ashland is looking at loosening similar restrictions on vacation rentals in residential zones. In the end, we know only three things are certain. One, the current system in which no nightly limitations are enforced provides for a vibrant, financially successful community. Second, enacting these ordinances will lead to several long, expensive legal battles. Some will be filed with the city, some will be filed in the state and federal courts. And third, whoever remains in the city will be left to deal with the unintended adverse consequences of these ordinances. For these reasons, I urge each of you to seriously pause and consider, vote no on these ordinances, or at least stay the decision to allow for more discussion about less drastic government measures to fix the issues that these ordinances supposedly address. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Your Honor, for the record, the hearing is closed, and the record is closed in this matter.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ford, you've indicated item 15, and we're going to have a public hearing as we get to that, and a couple more items, so I'll call you then, if that's all right. Has anybody else didn't get an opportunity to sign up, wished to sign up and make comments? Wish to make comments? Okay. Moving ahead, then, we have some employee appreciations.
Tony Lewis is our street supervisor, and he's going to introduce the award.
I'm here tonight to honor senior street maintenance worker Gene Wasnewski for 10 years of outstanding service to the city. Gene was born and raised in Lincoln County. His grandfather was one of the first settlers in Deepwater Bay. His family has lived in Lincoln County for over 100 years. Gene is a devoted family man. He coaches football and makes some of the best smoked salmon you'll ever try. Before joining the city, Gene worked as a logger and bridge builder. Gene, thank you very much for all your devoted service and hard work to the community. Thank you. Been a good 10 years. Yes, it has. Thank you.
Great. Gene, can you share with us some of your escapades on the last 10 years with streets? Have you been with streets all?
All 10 years, yeah. It's been fun. It's been a lot of sweeping, a lot of cleaning, lots of cutting trees down, cleaning catch basins, grading roads, brushing. It's something different every day.
So you've heard a lot of discussion around the condition of roads. Any observations?
We keep the roads pretty good. Gravel roads, keep gravel. Any potholes in the road, we try to fix them as we see them.
Yeah. Great.
Things be going pretty good.
Good. Well, we certainly appreciate you as an employee. It certainly 10 years shows longevity, so much appreciated.
Thank you.
We have a certificate, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you, Tony, for sharing that with us.
You're welcome.
All right. So you get the next one.
I get the next one. Richard? Richard Townsend is one of my direct reports. He's the Director of Community Development. Been with us since October 4, 1999, just a few months before I came, so he's the only community development director I've known here. In Oregon, the land use system is very, very complicated, and we are fortunate to have somebody who has a law degree and has been a practicing land use attorney. Richard is a graduate of Georgetown Law, a very prestigious law school, and Penn State, Pennsylvania State University in public administration, so he is well-educated and has a good background in land use law when he came here, and he's learned some more since then. He came in the middle of GOAL, 5 and 17? 5 and 17? Yeah. Which some of you may recall, Wes probably recalls, that was when there was essentially bloodletting in this chamber. The fights were pretty intense. The sides had become very polarized, and he came and accepted a job right in the middle of that, so I give him credit for that. He shepherded the department through many difficult issues, through boom times and bust times, and many, many difficult issues. And never during that time, in the 15 years that I've been here, have I ever seen him lose his temper, or shout, or be anything other than a gentleman. And that is very much appreciated when there are many high-stress situations here, to keep your calm, to be professional, and be a gentleman. He contributes to issues outside of his department, which is my expectation of all senior staff, so when there's an issue of general nature, he's not reluctant to contribute to that. And a lot of the recommendations that you see from me have been vetted through senior staff, and Richard's a very important member of that. Richard, thank you very much for 15 years.
So again, Mr. Townsend, 15 years, long time with one entity, one employer, and certainly one area of planning. Fortunately, there's been a lot of variety of commissions, I'm assuming, and people serving on that commission that you've gotten to know, and you've worked through all sorts of situations. Can you share with us anything unusual or memorable?
Almost everything ends up being unusual. I think what's most memorable is for many issues, there's a lot of passion around it and a lot of heat, some light, and it's just real interesting to hear the different sides of the same issues and try to reach a resolution that everybody's happy with. The, I'll say for myself, I particularly enjoy the opportunity to be able to help people, and working with the other staff members has been just a real delight. Not only has there been a lot of people on the planning commission, a lot of staff is coming on in the 15 years, too, and it's almost always just been really good people to work with. It's been really interesting. I'm hoping that there'll be a couple more years, and I think that the next step will be the most interesting, where we're working on a new comprehensive plan for the city.
Great. Good. Well, we appreciate the 15 years and certainly your time with the city, and the citizens appreciate what you've done, so thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, and let's move ahead, then, to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items of a repeat or routine nature considered under a single action. A counselor may remove a consent agenda item for separate consideration upon request. The consent agenda consists of number three is minutes of the meeting, August 11, 2014; number four is minutes of the meeting, August 25, 2014; and number five, amendment number three, memorandum of agreement with Confederate-aided tribes of the Sluts Indians. It's been a request to pull for separate consideration, number four and number five. All right, with either a... All right, with either a number three, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved. Seconded.
There's a motion with a second to approve Consent Agenda consisting of item number three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Kathy Steer, could you help us with number four, which is the minutes of the meeting, August 25th?
For the minutes of August 25th, Agenda Item Number Four, there was a change that needed to be made, and this is how line eight, starting on line eight, should read. I'll just read the paragraph how it should read. "Mr. Hocker summarized stating that initial discussion was held at the last meeting. Currently, the ordinance requires every commercial business and residence to have minimum trash service. There are a large number of accounts that don't follow that rule, which could be due to second homes. There are issues with enforcing the ordinance as it exists. He feels uncomfortable using water shut-off to enforce it, and it is uncomfortable requiring everyone to have this level of service with few exceptions. It is not working. He proposes that the city look at only those customers that are here full-time and have the appearance of full-time residency based on the amount of water usage." And this is the change. The proposal is to pick a usage of water per year, and then check to see how much water was used in previous years. If it meets a certain limit, they will not be required to commit to any of the trash service options. That change needed to be made. And then that one is ready to go.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve with that change?
So moved.
Seconded.
A motion to approve with the changes and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none. And then Kathy Steer, would you also, on amendment, the item number five, amendment number three?
The amendment number three, section one, needs to be revised to read as follows. "The July 28th, 2008 memorandum of agreement, as previously amended, is hereby amended to extend the term of the agreement for an additional two years, from July 29th, 2014 to July 28th, 2016." Everyone's ready.
Is there a motion to approve, item number five, amendment number three, as corrected?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? Hearing none. Thank you. Next item is Special Order of Business. We have an appointment to the Library Board. This is actually the student position, and this is the only one on the board that's every year annually reappointment, or in appointment. The term is only one year. Natalie Joy, who's actually in the audience, thank you, Natalie. You're fine there if you want. She's, you could sit down. Thank you. But Natalie has, Councilor Natalie has been seated, has taken this position for the last three years, I believe, and has applied again for her fourth year. And I've checked with board members, and they're very pleased with her participation and attendance. And from everything we've seen, Justice Narikas and I would like to recommend that we approve Natalie for another term.
Here, here.
Any other comments or questions from Council?
I'd just like to express my appreciation, Natalie, for your willingness to serve on the board and represent younger population in the city. Thank you.
Would that entertain a motion to have Council appoint Natalie Joy to the Library Board?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion with a second to point Natalie to the Library Board. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? It's approved. Thank you, Natalie. Thanks for coming this evening as well. We then have, this is a public hearing, this public hearing and public comments, public hearing to receive public comment on requests for annexation and rezoning of 11 acres on northeast Logan Road, Central Oregon Coast Properties, Logan Park, planning files, Annex 2014-01, CPA ZC 2014-01. This was continued from September 22nd to October 27th, and there's been a request to continue this on to January 26th, 2015. Is there any staff report or?
Mayor, I'd like to comment on that, and I'd hope that maybe Council would entertain a discussion. And I just got a call that I need to leave for a few minutes, if you'll excuse me. I'm concerned that they've asked that this be extended to until January 26th, because, quote, "the earliest opportunity, earliest opening on all of our calendars." Now, I'm concerned that staff has spent a lot of time on this issue, reviewing this. It's complicated, and we're fresh on it. And we've had a number of delays already through at Planning Commission and now at Council. I would ask Council to consider maybe throwing out a couple of other dates besides our regular meetings, and ask that they select one of those dates and get this completed this year. We're getting so many issues that are piling up. Staff is trying to juggle all these at once, and we need to terminate some of these. I don't believe that an applicant should have the right to just keep continuing this. There's a lot of people in this community, in the north end of town, that are concerned about this development, and that we keep canceling or postponing hearings. I think they have a right to have a date certain and be done with this. With that, you obviously need to talk to your attorney on this, and maybe the Planning Department, but I would ask you to consider trying to wrap this up this year.
Mr. Appicello, could you advise us in any way on what our options might be?
Well, obviously, you know, we don't have the applicant here to give us any proposed dates. But the request is for a continuance to January. This is not subject to the 120-day rule. Even if it was subject to the 120-day rule, you're entitled to basically a year's worth of extensions under that if you're an applicant. Applicants generally could withdraw applications that they presented to you, so the only concern, frankly, that I have is when things get delayed beyond 60 days or so, we like to re-notify people when it's a quasi-judicial application, and this involves quasi-judicial aspects. So I know that staff is willing to, you know, make, give new notifications if necessary to make sure that everybody who participated, you know, we don't want people to fall off due to attrition, basically. So I guess I'd recommend that if we're going to continue this, that we ask the applicant to pay for additional noticing to the people that have appeared. I don't know if we've done that before, but.
So one of the options is to continue but ask for funding in order to notice, you know, as we originally did, the public at large? Is that, that's one of the options?
That is one. I think, I think what the city manager was suggesting was that the applicant has looked at the city council's calendar and their own calendars and said, well, the people that we want to have here can only be here on the 26th, and that you might want to consider a meeting date other than your normal meeting date to deal with this, and maybe able to accelerate things and get this dealt with this year.
At a minimum, Your Honor, you're going to have to continue it to some date certain today.
Right.
And if that's just your next meeting while we work out calendars and see if there is an additional date, we'll need to do that.
Okay.
But I don't actually have any objection to the proposal. I mean, you're going to have a full hearing when it gets to you.
So you don't have an objection as far as having it as a special meeting?
Or the January date. I think it's the applicant's proposal. They could withdraw it if they wanted to.
So, Mr. Townsend, you've not spoken to the applicant, is just that letter that came in was?
That's right.
Would it make any sense to maybe extend this to our next November meeting, first meeting in November, and provide you time to visit with them to see if there's openings on their calendar in?
Sure.
November and December?
Yes, we can do that.
And go with that? And then we could deal with it, the first meeting in November?
Yeah.
You could report back?
Yeah, we can do that. Yes.
Okay. Council, any other suggestions? Or I guess we can by-step that, step beyond that and just go to the January 26th, but again?
I think, I think the plan of continuing until our next meeting and then having, talking with the applicant and see if we can figure out a date for it ahead of that time is not a bad idea. And if it doesn't work, then of course we have the 26th. But if we have the 26th of January, I'm, this thing has been kicked down the road so darn far, I would think that we would need to re-notify the people in the surrounding area, because by then they will have forgotten when this thing is going on.
Okay.
So in some manner, you know, to re-notify. But that's my opinion.
Other?
I agree.
So how about a consensus to?
You need a motion.
Or do we need a motion? You'd prefer a motion? How about a motion to continue this to November 10th, 6:00 PM, in these chambers? And then, but in the meantime, Mr. Townsend, if you could make contact with the applicant and see if there isn't some dates in January or November and December that might fit, that we could perhaps have a special meeting? You know, I guess we won't know that until November 10th, but you mind if we'll set them up as well then, funding a public re-notice?
We could propose that, at least offer it to them. I would suggest that we put something in the, on the agenda, that the hearing is contemplated to be continued to a date certain, but it would not be at the next meeting.
Right.
When people show up thinking that's what it's going to be.
Yes, good point. Okay.
Make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Then we have, this is a public comment on the item number, Agenda Item Number 15, which is Ordinance 2014-27, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title III, adding a new chapter, establishing a tax on the sale of marijuana and marijuana-infused products in the city of Lincoln City. And do we go right to public comments or at this point? Mr. Ford, I think you signed up. This would be the time.
I'm just here to say that I'm against the taxation of?
Mr. Ford, could you go ahead and give us your full name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Griff Ford.
That's right. Just go right into the mic there, not?
Griff Ford, 3219 Southwest Highway 101.
Thank you.
I'm here to ask that you please do not tax medical marijuana for our city. Please do not make it more expensive for people who are trying to manage their pain and ailments without using pharmaceutical drugs, such as morphine, oxycontin, et cetera, which have no city tax. That's it.
That's great. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak, comment on the marijuana ordinance proposed? Seeing, hearing none? We'll close that public comments then. And, Mr. Hocker is not, must not be, oh.
Oh, Mr. Hocker.
Oh, we have another comment. I think we've closed, but could we?
We could reopen.
Reopen the comment? So we have another comment? Okay. But let's reopen it.
Thanks, guys. My name is Randy Mallett. I'm the owner of Pipe Dreams Dispensary, and I just had one comment for you guys. And a little out of breath getting back up here. But my comment basically is that you do not tax medicine. The recreational marijuana, that's a debate. I'm all for a tax there, you know, as long as it's not too high. I think the 10% proposed is probably a fair number. And of course, that can be revisited at any time. But with medicine, it's been established as a medicine by the voters of the state, science, and by our state legislature. So I think that's a point, whatever your personal feelings are on it. It's been established that way, is it is a medicine. And I'm afraid of the precedent you'd be setting by taxation on a medicine. That's a very bad precedent to set. My personal belief is that you do not burden taxpayers and citizens with taxes on food or medicine. That's really all I have for you, so I appreciate your consideration and time and opening back up for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming forward.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
I did receive a, an email from a gentleman that asked for his testimony to be read. I thought maybe he might be here. Is there a Lance Lapham here? He said he was going to. I can read that.
Okay.
It says, "While I do believe that the city should benefit from a tax on the sale of recreational-use marijuana and marijuana-based products, I do not think that the true medical patients should be penalized and essentially double taxed for their medications, state and local. Other medications are not taxed in this manner, and many medicinal marijuana patients are barely able to afford their monthly medications as it is. I believe if the taxes become too heavy for these consumers, then you will find many more growing their own, which will eventually make for less product to be taxed. So please consider only applying the additional city tax to those who do not have a legal OMMP card for their medication and who purchase marijuana for recreational use only. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Thank you, Kathy.
And, Your Honor, in the, in the council communication, when you get to this, that was the, the only issue that we flagged that you would want to discuss, is there's been a split in the cities. Some are proposing a tax on medical marijuana, some are setting a tax at zero, some are simply not taxing it at all.
We'd go then, go ahead and close the comments period on that ordinance. And Mr. Hocker, we're to you on the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. I've given you a memo about possibility of opening a connection between the Boulevard, Devil's Lake Boulevard in, in the villages, and Lincoln Palisades. And there's some good reasons to keep it closed, there's some good reasons to keep it open. If, if you wish to give it a try to open that, then we need to come back to you with a resolution, because we've made a limitation on vehicular traffic. I think on balance, the reasons to open it up, at least on an experimental basis for a few months, outweigh the disadvantages, and I think it would serve the public a little bit better if it was open. We could have some problems with that. We could have some, because it's kind of isolated, we could have some dumping, other kinds of trouble that we would need to deal with. But, you know, most people are pretty good, and they're going to respect the property. It's a beautiful piece of property, and I think we ought to consider giving it a shot.
Now, to date, it's been certainly open for walking.
All the time.
All the time. And then, I guess in the summer months, we've had it open for car activity last weekend of the month.
Right.
So people could access that way. In your proposal, you talked about burying, doing some barriers so that traffic can't traverse all the way.
Right. Past the turnoff to Palisades, we would block that. Because it, it takes you up to a cul-de-sac and it goes nowhere, and I, and I don't see opening that up. What I'm looking at is a loop rather than a dead end.
Yeah.
So we would put some type of barrier there that our, our utility crews could still remove to get to whatever they needed to get to, but...
And that would bring it up West Devils Lake Road, follow it up, and then turn into the Palisades subdivision.
Right.
I forget the name of the...
Yeah. One of the complications, of course, is that, that short section of gravel, and it's not, it was need improved somewhat from how it is today, would be just a gravel section of a couple hundred feet, would not meet our road standards. And so this would have to be a temporary arrangement. When Lincoln Palisades Three, Phase Three develops, one of their requirements is going to be to, to pave that road, put in curb gutter sidewalk in that short section. So the city wouldn't want to, to do anything more than just make that passable temporarily.
Okay. Other questions from counsel?
Actually, I don't have a question. I have a comment that, that's relatively close to me. And I think it's, as long as we put a barrier up so that we don't have a lot of traffic going out to the cul-de-sac, which is, which would have been my concern, was just people going out there. I think it's a good idea on an experimental basis to see, see how it works. At this point, I see a lot of people going at Palisades and, and trying to figure out how they can get through there. So I, I think would be a good alternate route for people to get to the light at West Devils Lake, northeast Devils Lake Boulevard, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And certainly with the barrier, like I said, just past that intersection, I think, I think it's a good idea.
Anybody else with a, a comment or thoughts on that?
I'd support Mr. Hocker's recommendation that we try it for several months, then revisit the issue if problems arise.
And what would that constitute? A resolution?
I believe so.
Okay.
I, I didn't want to spend a lot of time.
Right.
And we've, we've had our attorney working on other things and, but my recollection is that we had a resolution talking about the restrictions on vehicle traffic there.
Okay.
And I think we'd have to revise that resolution probably at the next meeting.
Okay.
And then we could give it, give it a try. There would be a minor amount of grading of that gravel that would need to be done first, so we couldn't do it for a couple weeks or a month anyway. It gives us time to, to clear up the legalities of it.
I'm, I'm betting that there might be a lot of walkers that, you know, might be disturbed by it, but reminding folks that that's all paved and there's sidewalks and it's pretty...
Well, there's an eight-foot wide trail throughout that section. And, and by the way, I don't expect to have any traffic there. I still think it would be a lovely place to walk, again, with that eight-foot wide concrete trail separated from the street. It's beautiful.
It is. Okay. Consensus or motion? What would...
All I need is consensus because again, you would need to do something with the resolution.
Take action on the resolution. So consensus if you have staff bring us back a resolution?
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
The next item is, if anybody has any ideas or, or the public wants to make a recommendation to counsel, we've been asked by our district attorney to do an appointment from this area to the local Public Safety Coordinating Council that has some, that provides input to the county commissioners on, on a number of judicial issues. And I don't know how much explanation I need to do because the, the letter was in the packet and I was so, I, I don't, I didn't anticipate making an appointment tonight. I anticipated getting the word out. And again, that, that letter is, is in the packet.
It was not clear to me whether they're looking for current city councilors or the public at large.
I don't, I, I don't think that it matters, but I do think that an appointment by the city council would be the appropriate thing. So I, I don't know if it would be a citizen that, I think it would be fine if it was a citizen that you appointed, or, or a member of council, or, or even a member of staff, which I'm not, I'm not thinking that's probably the best idea, but you, I mean, you could do that.
Okay. One of the, of course, I have a note in my own margin here to ask if any councilors are just dying to participate in this endeavor.
I believe it's a quarterly meeting.
Yeah, that's what I see in Newport.
Mm-hmm.
So if, if so, not to put people on the spot or have to make choices, you could contact me. And maybe the same thing could be true if there's public out there that is interested, or we can share more, you know, the information we have anyway, and try to find someone that might be interested in representing the north end of, of the county.
And I can post this in addition to having it in the, in the packet for tonight's meeting, which is online and will continue to be online for several years. I can post it on, on our news section of the, of the, of our website.
That'd be great.
It's a good opportunity to provide input to the county commissioners on an issue, on a variety of issues involving the judiciary and jails and et cetera.
Yeah. Because it is funding-wise, it does take a, a large portion of the county budget.
Right. Right. We have a potential, which is why I've been going back and forth here. We, we've been in mediation most of today on a, on the potential settlement of pending litigation. We have a, a settlement that I'm going to ask you to review this evening, of which I can recommend. It's, it's now being reviewed briefly by our city attorney, and I expect him to return very shortly. I don't know that, it's really a choice whether you want to start in on all these other issues or maybe take a, a 10-minute recess.
Would, and if, by taking recess, we'd have the time to read the...
Yes.
...settlement as well?
Yeah. I, I can have that back to you in about three minutes, as soon as I run down one end of the hall and back.
Why don't, why don't we do that then?
Richard or somebody, it's in the copy machine in the admin offices. There's a number of copies. If you could bring them back and distribute them here.
And then why don't we take a recess until it'd be 7:15, if that's all right?
Thank you very much, Mayor. If this wasn't a matter of substance, I wouldn't ask for, for this, and I, I think you know I don't do that very often.
Sounds good. Thank you.[1126.54]
On record.
Call the council meeting back in order. Sorry for that inconvenience. Moving ahead on the ordinance, ordinances. Ordinance number 2014-21. First reading, please.
Before we go there, Your Honor, do you want to make a change to the agenda and indicate that we'll be going into an executive session after these ordinances because we have a matter that has just come up?
We, I do. Counsel, if you don't mind, we'd like to add that, just right between, we'll go ahead and take citizen comments at the end, and then before adjourning tonight's meeting, we'll do an executive session. So we'll take a-
That would be ORS 192662H, pending litigation, CETA. And then we'll come out of executive session, you can take no action in executive session, and resume the regular meeting and conclude.
Is that right with counsel? All right?
Yes.
Thank you. Then let's move to ordinances, and if we could move ahead with this ordinance 2014-21 and position four, first reading. Dr. Pacello.
All right, Your Honor, the first thing I would tell you is that there is a question that came up, and I did not mention this to you in the council communication, I, there was a, pointed out that in the accessory use ordinance, I'm sorry, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance you passed earlier this year, 2014-08, it says an accessory dwelling unit may not be a VRD. And this ordinance says, in section 1718030, accessory uses, in the new VR zone, it says that accessory dwelling units subject to the provisions of LCMC 178110, which includes the prohibition on VRDs. So there's a conflict that's been pointed out in one of the many comments that were submitted. So the question for you all is, in the VR zone as proposed, would accessory dwelling units, both the accessory dwelling unit and the primary unit, be allowed to be a VRD? And staff's recommendation would be, sure, why not? It's a VR zone. Or you have, as an ult, and you haven't discussed this in the past, so, because you didn't have a VR zone when you were talking about the accessory dwelling unit provision. So if we said, except, if we added the words, except LCMC 178110B11, which is where that prohibition is, that would just completely remove the prohibition in 11 that says neither unit, principal, or accessory could be a VRD. So if that's what you would want to do, then I would read 1718030 accessory uses, paragraph C, accessory dwelling units subject to provisions of LCMC 178110, except LCMC 178110B11. If that's what you'd like to do, then that, me reading that would satisfy the requirement that the change be read.
And counsel, what's your thoughts on that?
In my opinion, I would think both of them should be used as VRDs if they want.
Should be?
Yes.
Could be.
In the VR zone.
In the VR zone, yeah.
That would be-
I agree.
Yep.
Okay, so that was the only change to the body of the ordinance that I had identified. There was the attachment A, which is the findings, and this would be a change that would apply to both 2014-21 and 2014-22. I had a supplemental finding regarding to one of the commenters had commented about it being a taking. So if you want to bear with me, I will read this, which would be an addition to the findings document, which is attached to both ordinances. During the hearing's end, in the correspondence and the record, there are allegations that the proposed ordinances constitute a regulatory taking resulting in the city having to pay compensation to landowners. In Hall versus State, Exrel Oregon Department of Transportation, 3550R 503, 2014, the Oregon Supreme Court recently clarified the test applicable to different kinds of takings claims. As regards regulatory takings, the court stated, other types of governmental actions also can result in de facto taking. When, for example, a governmental, a government regulation rather than physical occupation or invasion restricts a property owner's right of possession, enjoyment, and use, a taking can occur if, as a consequence, the property retains no economical, economically viable or substantial beneficial use. Dunn, 3550R at 348, 328P3, 1261 Coast Range Conifers, 3390R at 146-47, 117P3D990 Boise Cascade Corporation versus Border Forestry, 3250R, 185, 197-98, 935P2D411, 1997. The proposed ordinances: Create a new mixed-use zone for future application; provide for an optional expedited route to a limited, to a new limited VRD license in a residential zone; maintain the existing land use process for accessory use approval; provide an optional settlement offer for existing VRDs who may or may not be operating in excess of accessory use limits; provide a license with the option to apply for vested rights nonconforming use determination; and provide that the existing accessory use language in the code be enforced in both future land use permitting and future land use enforcement actions. The ordinances provide options and alternatives to property owners. There is no new regulation, only the stated intent to enforce the existing code. Any takings allegations based on the existing code will have to await exhaustion of the applicable land use processes and appeals identified, including vested rights or nonconforming use determination. Whether the standard for taking of this, further, the standard for taking of this sort, as clarified by the court this year, is not mere diminution in value but rather more restrictive, no economically viable or substantial beneficial use. All found that the same restrictive standard applies to condemnation-blite cases where condemnation is threatened. The issue of VRD regulation was previously litigated in Cope versus City of Cannon Beach, 1150R App. 1114-15, 1992. In Cope, the city ordinance prohibited rentals in certain residential zones of less than 14 days and provided for an exception process akin to a vested rights determination process. The court stated, petitioners argued to Luba and in their first assignment to us, that the restriction constitutes a taking without just compensation. Luba rejected that argument on the ground that the ordinance contains a hardship relief provision under which an affected property owner may apply to continue rental use by showing that investments made exclusively to develop that use cannot be adequately recouped under the other provisions of the ordinance. Therefore, Luba held, the takings argument is not ripe. We agree, see Joyce versus Multnomah County, 1140R App. 244835, 1992. Petitioners contend, however, the so-called hardship relief provided in the challenged ordinance is available only to owners of property where the physical improvements have committed the property to short-term rental use, a standard nearly impossible to meet. And that's in quotes. The argument provides too much, the argument proves too much, because if the property is not committed to short-term rental use, the prohibition could not arguably eliminate all other viable economic uses such as living in one's own dwelling. Therefore, there could be no taking of property that does not meet the threshold criterion for hardship relief that petitioner describes. That's the end of the quote. The case points out that the vacation rental use is not the only use available for single-family homes in residential zones. There are other viable uses such as living in one's own dwelling, in quotes. Further, the City of Lincoln City has not proposed outlawing VRDs in the city. To the contrary, every residential lot may enjoy some limited VRD use. Expressly to avoid Measure 49 diminution in value claims, the city is not changing the existing operative language of the code relating to the accessory use limitation. While the city does not believe Measure 49 applies because the use is commercial and not residential use, the city has taken the additional precaution of not amending the accessory use language as was originally proposed, just to avoid the volume of possible Measure 49 claims. The existing language has been in place for more than five years and is immune from any Measure 49 challenge. The council elected not to repeal the existing accessory use limitation as was requested. The limitation was retained because it served valuable zoning and comprehensive plan policies to protect and stabilize residential neighborhoods. In Cannon Beach, the court upheld the ordinance against challenges. The ordinance violated the tourism-based economic poli, or sorry, economy policies of the plan. The court pointed to the city's findings, which are equally applicable here. And this is from the findings. The city's findings recite, among other things, in their alia, this interpretation of those plan policies. Cannon Beach has determined it will provide for a moderate level of controlled growth, the economy policy one. Tourism is the main element of the city's economy. The city has determined that future economic development must maintain a balance between tourism and the stability of its residential areas. The economy policy two. Because tourism has the capability of adversely affecting the city's small-town character and its residential areas. A loss of the city's small-town character and integrity of its residential neighbors will adversely affect the economic health of the community. It is the charm of the city's commercial and residential areas that attracts persons to Cannon Beach, not only as a tourist destination but also as a retirement community. The rental of dwelling units for transient occupancy is a commercial use associated with the city's tourism industry. The city has determined that this commercial use in residential areas will adversely affect the character of residential areas and is thus inconsistent with the stated policy of finding a balance between tourism development and the maintenance of residential areas. That's Cope versus City of Cannon Beach, 1150R App. 11, page 15 to 16, 1992. Again, that applies to both ordinances, 2014-21 and 2014-22. That's the last change to 2014-21. So I'm going to read the title of 2014-21. An ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning amending Chapter 17.12, zoning districts established, Section 1712010, classification of zones, adding a new mixed-use zoning district for future application, Chapter 1718, vacation rental zone, authorizing a VRD as a permitted use in the VR zone with no accessory use limitation, amending the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan goals and map to add a new mixed-use development VR district category. That would be, I believe, everything we'd need to do to complete first reading of ordinance 2014-21. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2014-21 and set second reading for November 10th?
Yes.
I would so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second to approve the first reading and continue the second reading until November 10th, 2014, in these chambers at 6:00 p.m. Any discussion?
Yes, please, Your Honor. As an elected official, I feel obligated to balance, to the best of my ability, the various interests of our diverse population. As I participate in deliberations regarding city policy matters, balance is a prime objective of mine. Years ago, a number of Lincoln City residents requested the city council enforce the existing accessory use limitation in Lincoln City Municipal Code 17.80.05.B.2 that has been in our municipal code since 1989. I feel this was a reasonable and fair request. We have findings in front of us that are a result of that request. We've got 45 pages of findings. I'm not going to read 45 pages, but I would like to read a few portions of them. These are, these are available at City Hall at the front desk for anybody who wants the entire, the entire set of, set of findings. This is regarding allegations. I would like to, like to- I would like to publicly refute the allegation made more than a few times that there is very little, if any, support for enforcing tight limits on VRDs in residential neighborhoods. This is page 18 of the findings. During the public hearing process, there was a significant public outcry to not make the sweeping changes identified in the yes/no zone consensus group proposal, i.e. to repeal the existing accessory use limitation and open up large yes areas to intense VRD operations and prohibit them in other no areas. The public outcry included requests to simply enforce the existing law. In addition to this public testimony, the council was presented with data from the city manager concerning community attitudes in the form of survey results. The results clearly indicate that the predominant community attitude is not as portrayed by the consensus group. 62% of registered voters with an opinion did not wish to encourage VRD growth. Further, 65% of those responding favored tight limits on vacation rentals in their neighborhoods. Council finds and determines that the public need expressed by the data and community attitudes exhibited by the survey is strongly in favor of enforcement of existing land use limitations to bring about land use compatibility. The offer of a voluntary compliance settlement in the ordinance is in furtherance of that public need. Similarly, the option to set forth and prove your case either by a quasi-judicial zone or other use or rights determination furthers the enforcement goals and balances consideration of economy goals. The council further finds and determines that the consensus group's proposed solution to divide the city and separate incompatible uses acknowledges the existence of the land use compatibility problem. The proposed VR zone is consistent with the existing division between limited VRD operation in residential zones and unrestricted VRD operations in commercial and mixed-use zones. Because the VR zone is not imposed with these ordinances, there is no danger that the appropriate rezoning considerations will be glossed over. Council further finds that the city's proposed solution to enforce the existing limitation and offer voluntary compliance and other measures like the VR zone, the impact of compliance addresses other public needs such as the economy goals addressed in these findings. Page 26 of the findings states once again, for people who do not understand what the problem is, restates the problem. Problem at core is that some owners have used their residential VRD properties as if they were in commercial zones, and this frequency and intensity of use has created conflicts with surrounding residents, including noise, garbage, and parking issues. What appears to have been overlooked in the current debate is that the allowance for VRD use in residential zones was never intended to be on par with commercial VRD intensity and frequency of use. There is a clear separation of commercial-level VRD uses required to be in commercial zones and minor accessory existing -- and minor-y VRD use in residential zones. The text, context, and history of the existing ordinance demonstrate that unlimited vacation rental use in a residential zone is unlawful commercial use and a violation of the code. Again, the code and plan, comprehensive plan, support that such use is permitted only in a commercial zone. It is authorized only as incidental and subordinate accessory use in a residential zone. One cannot pretend that full-time commercial VRD use is housing. Moving to page 29 and the economy goal under the comprehensive plan. Economy goal states, "To support the tourism -- the economy goal is, to support the tourism industry and achieve a degree of diversity in the community which will allow a balanced economy that will, in turn, support an adequate level of services for all members of the area." A great deal of testimony was given about the economic benefits of vacation rentals. The council does not dispute that vacation rental use of second homes has economic value to the city. The community benefits from economic activity by tourists. However, the economic engine of the tourism industry is not the sole consideration. Economic activity is to be balanced against the economic engine of the full-time retiree. As was stated during public hearings, retirees have economic impact all year long, just not -- not just on weekends or during the peak season. According to the proposed ordinances, seek to maintain the balance identified in the economy goal. The ordinances seek to create mechanisms to bring noncompliant VRD operations back into conformance with the code and plan. Such compliance will reduce or eliminate incompatible development, driving away full-time retired residents, an important aspect of the local economy. Further, the ordinances propose to facilitate legitimate increased levels of operations of vacation rentals by creating a new mixed-use zone which, after appropriate justification, can be applied to new properties in the city. I feel that the allegations made by Oregonians in action and those made by Joan Chambers have been adequately addressed by our city attorney. Thank you, Mr. Appicello, for your thorough and clearly laid-out land use findings. I believe the findings made and presented to us are factual and supported by the record. I have a little bit more here, Mr. Mayor, if you please. I believe and trust ordinance 20 -- ordinances 2014-21, 2014-22, and 2014-23 will bring the city into compliance with our Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan, our zoning code, and applicable land use planning goals, a very desirable outcome, in my opinion. I also believe the implementation of these ordinances will help protect and stabilize existing residential neighborhoods from incompatible development. I value the VRD segment of our local hospitality industry, and since we have received data from the last period examined, TRT data, the last period being April 2012 to April 2013, indicating that 25% of the VRDs accounted for 57% of the total VRD gross room rental and 50% of the VRDs accounted for 82.4% of the VRD gross room rental. Since that's the case, I do not believe our enforcement of the existing Lincoln City Municipal Code regarding accessory use will severely impact this valuable and desired aspect of our hospitality options. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Norikas. Any other comments from discussion from council? Hearing none, we have a motion with a second to approve first reading. Roll call, please.
Norikas?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We then have ordinance number 2014-22 in first reading.
Okay, in this ordinance, there was another comment submitted by a citizen about the inspection of records. And although, well, let me start with, there was a Microsoft Word issue about a table in section seven of the ordinance. Apparently, movement or changing of a format, remove the table from view. It was still there. It apparently just disappeared, but if you go and add a line back, it popped back in again. But since it wasn't in the PDF, I'm going to read. Section seven, Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, chapter 1734, Nelskot Plan District NP, section 1734050, uses permitted. Table 1734050A, land use is allowed in Nelskot, row six, only -- row six, number six, only of the tables hereby amended to correctly address vacation rentals in the NBD and MBMU districts. Table 1734050A, land use is allowed in Nelskot. This is again, row six. Uses, status of use in district. First column is use categories. The second column is under status of use in district, business district. Second column, or third column cottage, residential, and the fourth column, beachside, mixed use. And this is highlighted in yellow in the online packet. Primary is stricken in the word principal use of single-family dwelling as a vacation rental dwelling subject to LCMC 178050. It's designated as P permitted in business district, N not permitted in cottage residential, and P permitted in beachside mixed use. Again, that was the effort to go through the individual zones and clearly indicate that they were permitted uses where they were, business districts. And so that unfortunate Microsoft error. Now, the second issue was, as I mentioned, a citizen pointed out that with respect to the inspection of books and records kept, required to be kept, that there would be a violation of the Fourth Amendment if we simply required those documents to be produced or we just -- there's a Ninth Circuit case that talked about, it's actually on appeal to the U.S. Supreme Court, that talked about the inspection of records by a police officer who just showed up at a hotel or motel and said, "I'm going to look at your records," and then basically did so without a warrant. And in that case, there was a question about the legality of that. The Ninth Circuit said that was an unlawful search. Now, that is not how we do things. Our ordinance requires that you maintain those records, that you keep them, and that you maintain them as confidential records as well, and that they be available for our inspection upon request. Now, if you were to refuse the request, our typical procedure would be to go seek a warrant, just as we would, and this has happened where someone says, "No, you may not enter my property for purposes of inspection." The procedure is in the existing code to go seek a warrant. So because there seemed to be concern that we were going to barge in and seize people's records, I'm proposing that we add clarification that that is not the case. So again, this is just being responsive to some of the citizen comments. We would add a new section 12, Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, chapter 1784, remedies, section 1784040, inspection is hereby amended to clarify the city's intent to comply with inspection warrant requirements as follows. 1784050 inspections, the building official or code enforcement officer or designee shall have the authority to make routine periodic inspections of property and premises, adding the words, "and inspect books and records required to be maintained by city code within the city limits to determine whether there is compliance with the laws, rules, and regulations which are designed for protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the public, and to make such inspections upon receipt of complaints or specific or general information indicating the existing of hazardous conditions or noncompliance with such rules, regulations, and laws. Any event that the building official or code enforcement officer or designee is denied access to any property or premises or denied inspection of books and records required to be maintained for the purposes of making inspection provided for in this title or other provision of the municipal code, such officer shall not inspect such premises until or -- and records, I have to add the words "and records," unless or until he or she has obtained from the municipal judge of the city a search warrant for inspection of such premises or records." So the words "or" and "and records" were missing from proposed change. The subsequent sections, sections that formerly section 12 is now amended to be section 13, 14, or 13 is now 14, 14 is now 15, 15 is now 16, 16 is now 17. And the fourth, fifth line of section 17 would be sections 13 through 17. And I'll make these corrections for the final reading. In addition, I've already noted that the findings were amended to add the additional supplementary findings that I read, which equally apply to 2014-22. In addition, I would recommend that in section two of ordinance 2014-22, in section two, paragraph 2C, we would remove the last sentence of that section, which is section 178050B2C. That section would now read, "Council directs that in residential accessory use land -- I'm sorry, residential accessory use VRD land use permitting, which is LCMC 178050C, and code enforcement, including revocation proceedings under this title and Title V, the planning director, planning commissioner, or other authorized decision-maker shall expressly address with detailed findings the existing code accessory use definitional elements and comprehensive plan and zoning context in the decision." Period. That would be the end of section C. I do not have any additional changes to 2014-22 at this time. Again, with those changes, I would request that you approve first reading and set second reading for November 10th, 2014, at 6:00 p.m.
Entertain a motion?
I would so move.
Is there a second?
Accept the first reading of ordinance 2014-22 and set second reading for the 10th of November.
Is there a second?
As amended.
Second.
And that's as amended.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Who was the second?
Chester.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
And Norikas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, first reading on ordinance 2014-23.
Your Honor, this is first reading of ordinance 2014-23, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses, and Regulations, Chapter 5.14, Vacation Rental Dwelling License, adding criteria and standards to the VRD license provisions of the code. Ask for approval of first reading and set second reading for November 10th, 2014.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
And Norikas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Hucker, for November 10th, can we look at discussion also on resolution or appropriate action as far as fees, perhaps? What might be a way to operate or encourage individuals to move properties into a new, potentially new VR zone?
Well, we'll try to come up with something. We're trying to balance the fact that I know this council intends to rezone a fair, what I believe to be a fair amount of property to the new VR zone. And what we don't want to do is have, is encourage a whole bunch of individuals to come in with this lot and that lot, because those lots very well may be in the new VR zone. So one way to encourage that is, of course, the suggestion that we waive the fee for annex -- or, excuse me, for, it's been a long day.
Rezoning.
For rezoning. So we need to build something to -- So we need to build something to not encourage that, but let a certain amount of the process run through the city, let the city initiate these rezonings that are most logical first, and then encourage individuals to come in. It's a matter of working that out, because we also can't do spot zoning.
Right. Would you then, as you look at that, might also then push the discussion on effective dates? Maybe the combination of the two might be?
Yeah, we need to work out that a little bit better than what we have.
Great.
Again, we're not trying to disadvantage people on this, and I think when it's all said and done, the vast number of people who own or manage or are employed by VRDs are going to be pretty pleased at the outcome. I, I will, I'm pretty sure of that.
Great. Mr. Abcheller, did you have?
No, I guess I'll just state, as Mr. Harker says, we'll address some implementation issues at the next meeting, and any change that is proposed will be fully read, and it'll be up to you to proceed.
All right, then let's move to Ordinance Number 2014-27. First reading.
Your Honor, before you get into first reading, as I mentioned earlier when you took public comment, simply to preserve the issue, I basically reviewed the City of Ashland's ordinance and the City of Wilsonville ordinance, and I put together draft ordinance as you asked me to at your last meeting. You know, I'd made some slight refinements. There's nothing terribly original about these ordinances. The, as I mentioned, some cities have elected to not impose a tax on medical marijuana. Some have imposed the tax and set it at zero, and I believe that's, Ashland had set all the fees by, or all the tax by resolution, which were authorized in the ordinance, and I thought that was a little more cumbersome. You aren't going to be changing it every day, so. And so you have the options. It's totally your discussion. You've had at least three comments not to impose the tax on medical marijuana. And I'll do the first reading if you'd like, or if you guys want to talk about that, then I'll read any change if you want language deleted. It would require that I read the language being deleted.
Okay. Why don't, if you don't mind, why don't we talk about that first to save rereading? So council, you've gotten and read this draft of the ordinance. Are there pieces here that you'd wish to open up for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm perfectly all right with all of the taxing scheme, with the exception of the tax on medical marijuana. I think that runs counter to the whole concept of why we passed the ordinance to begin with. Recreational marijuana, I don't have a problem taxing that, but medical marijuana, I do have a problem putting a tax on that.
Okay. Any other thoughts in that regard?
Boss, I somewhat agree with it, but I see leaving the option open to tax medical marijuana maybe sometime in the future, setting the tax at zero, and go ahead and take taxing recreational marijuana if it passes. Because we, I think if I understand, you know, council rises, we can put a tax on medical marijuana and leave it at zero, and then future councils or whatever could decide what they want to do with it later on. Am I correct here?
Yeah. The issue here is that if this ordinance passes first and second reading this evening, it will be effective in 30 days. If it's effective in 30 days, it will beat the effective date of the proposed measure should the proposed measure pass. Proposed measure has a 30-day delay in its effective date from the date of the election. So if you, I'm a little bit, well, Ashland has this authorization to set it by resolution, but if they're trying to beat preemption, I would set, I would set a fee, I would set a tax before the effective date. So I don't really think that having the option to increase it later really exists, even if you use the device that Ashland used to say, "We'll do it by resolution." So I think if you want to set it at, if you don't want to tax medical marijuana, then I would just remove that applicable language, B, Paragraph B1, from Section 328-030. I think if you, if you were to set it at zero, we would necessarily have to amend the ordinance after the effective date of the measure, and that would run into the preemption language. So again, this is about a measure that has some strong preemption language in it, and if our action is effective prior to their action being effective, it should survive, at least the League of Oregon Cities is betting on it. But I don't want to be in the position of having to amend it later and then argue that.
Okay, that helps. Any other areas on this? I raised on the next page the question of collection, and this appears to be a calendar quarter, quarterly collection. Is there any reason to not have it a monthly collection?
I believe that the director has the option to have a shorter period when, and this is kind of typical, when it's necessitated, you know, they don't make the quarterly payments on time, or they fail to remit or report. So I think it's been established this way. I know that's the way the Ashland food and beverage tax is run. It's set up as quarterly, but if you fail to pay on time and remit and report on time, the director has the ability to move you to a monthly schedule. So I think that flexibility is kind of built in here.
Our lodging tax, for example, is quarterly.
Yes.
I mean, it's a monthly tax. I mean, they have to report at the quarter the three months individually. It's a matter of work for the business and work for the staff, and it's probably less work for both if it's done quarterly.
Well, I think, and that may be, I've asked, and back in the day of, you know, pencil and ledgers, I would agree. Today with electronics, you know, I'm questioning whether it makes sense, and I have no knowledge. I looked at that when I read that and said, knew it was with the TRT tax, very similar. But what you're doing is, you know, holding, you know, revenue, you know, for actually 90-plus days before it's being, you know, to the entity.
I don't think it's a big issue. Debbie, do you want to comment on this? Is it, is important to you? If it is, come on up and have your say. Debbie Mamonie, our finance director.
I think there's a plus and minus as to monthly versus quarterly, and I'm not sure how much I weigh one over the other. Monthly is more work for staff. There's also follow-up, delinquency processes that you're doing a lot more of. Quarterly, on the other hand, it may be harder to collect. By the time you get to enforcement activity, the balance may be quite high. So I'm not, I don't know which one's worse or better.
I guess, you know, I would prefer the wording go to monthly and keep that other wording in there of, you know, of a longer time if deemed, you know, a work issue or...
You can deal with the monthly, right?
I believe so, yeah.
I don't know how, how, council, that was just...
It's fine by me.
Any other areas as you read through?
Your Honor, I'll point out that one of your counselors that isn't here expressed some concerns about kind of buying into the violation of federal law, and I added a rather extensive limitation under section on page 2, 328-010B, which is basically a very long disclaimer saying you're not authorizing any violations, and I was hoping to address that concern even though he's not here.
And again, this is just an ordinance that would go into effect if legalization in the state of Oregon occurs.
Well, it'll go into effect, it will have no use basically if there is no measure passed, so.
I guess, I didn't hear any objections to the monthly. We had two kind of discussions on the medical. Mr. Quant, are you fine with the satisfaction of just eliminating?
Just eliminating the tax.
Okay.
Yeah.
So to eliminate B1, that would refer to tax on any kind of medical marijuana?
Yes.
With those?
And monthly is fine. I think it's, quarterly is fine too, so. I'm not rock hard on that.
My problem with the monthly is that this ordinance refers to quarterly throughout. I have to read any changes, so it's going to take me some time to sit here and mark this up, and then I have to read all those changes. I mean, we could add a sentence that says something, and this is horrible, but we could say, notwithstanding the quarterly report, the report shall be submitted monthly. That's really poor drafting, but if you want me to, if you really want to go with monthly as opposed to leaving the discretion with the finance director, we could say that.
Well, you know, I guess I hate, personally, I hate discretion, and I'd rather people understand upfront, you know, what it is, rather than, you know, the director have a bad day.
Even the state, though, collects its taxes on a quarterly basis, not a monthly.
Yeah, and states in financial.
Well, that's not, I mean, you know, people don't pay their taxes, but I mean...
Exactly.
I mean, most businesses are, I, you, I would think it would just be easier to figure it on a quarterly basis, and you know you've got it coming up, and, but that's me.
It just seems like, you know, we're making a decision based on the, you know, is there not a way that, well, we're trying to see if we...
Well, it's an ordinance, we have to read the changes, it's charter provision, so I...
But again, we'll only be second reading if this passes unanimously.
That's correct.
And I don't know if that will happen. So I appreciate your willingness to make the changes, but you may have additional time.
That's true.
So how do we find that out?
I guess, I guess you might want to ask if there's a motion to change the vote, or the remittance and reporting from quarterly with the option to go to monthly to monthly. And if, just, you're asking the internal question without asking the end question. So if...
Okay. So could I entertain a motion? I would entertain a motion to make the change on the remittance to a monthly basis rather than quarterly. Is there someone who?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. I don't know what, so that means keep it at a quarterly? All right.
Less reading.
Okay, there you go. All right.
Okay, I will, I believe there's consensus on removing, well...
The medical.
I'll just read that the section to be removed would be Section 328-030, levy of tax. Paragraph B, it currently reads, "The amount of the tax levied is as follows. Paragraph 1 will be stricken, and the paragraph 2 will be renumbered as paragraph 1, and the words 5%, of the gross taxable sale amount paid to the seller of marijuana and marijuana-infused products by a person who is a registry identification card holder would be stricken."
Yes.
Great. All right.
So we've, I've...
So with that, and a motion for?
Did I, did I read the title?
I don't think you did.
So this is first reading of an ordinance, 2014-27, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title III, Revenue and Finance, adding a new chapter 328, establishing a tax on the sale of marijuana and marijuana-infused products in the city of Lincoln City. I would ask for approval of first reading of the ordinance, and if it's unanimous, we proceed to second reading. If not, I'm going to ask you to set a special meeting to conduct second reading.
I would so move that we accept first reading.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton?
No.
Norakis?
So we need to set a second meeting?
Yes.
Or a special meeting date?
We have a, an event on the fourth.
Monday?
I'm sorry, the third. Yeah, next Monday.
Yes.
Great.
Let's...
Can we set it, can we set that for next Monday?
At the start of that, or do that first, use that same four o'clock, and then go into the other?
Or earlier if council's available, but if not, 3:30? No, four o'clock?
Four o'clock seems...
So we'll change, okay. It shouldn't be a long meeting.
Yes, it should not be.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, I would need a...
Motion is that second reading?
For Monday?
Monday?
November?
November 3rd.
November 3rd at 4:00. That would be my motion.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Thank you. Thank you. All right. We then have comments, comments from citizens present.
Could we, could we adjourn first for a brief executive session?
We do that right after comments? Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Executive session, okay? This be the time for comments? Just come forward. Thank you.
Margaret Schroeder again. I just have a comment with regard to the non-agenda item that was mentioned earlier about the city's planned future location of vacation rental zones in the city. My question is, why all the secrecy? I would urge the city to share its plans for the planned locations of city-initiated vacation rental zones to its citizens and taxpayers now, or at a minimum before the second reading scheduled for November 10th on ordinance numbers 2014, 21, 22, and 23. This seems especially important and timely given Mr. Harker's comments that folks will be pleased by the city's plans. So, share them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else make comments? Seeing none?
I'm going to go ahead and go.
Oh, please, come forward. Didn't say, apologize.
Admiral Singh, 10030 Hoffman Road, Monmouth, Oregon. I want to thank you, all of you, for your good stewardship of the city, for your time and the voluntary service. You've been here since 4:00 today, I understand, and you're not paid for it. I want to thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else seeing none then? We'll go into recess so that council can have an executive session, and we'll reconvene. reconvene.
On record?
Reconvene the city council meeting, and we would have a, entertain a motion on the settlement agreement.
I would so move.
And this is, I'd ask for a motion to approve the settlement agreement dated October 27, 2014. This is the city of Lincoln City and Kent and Mary CETA, and concerns LCC case number Ask for approval of the settlement and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
What he said is what my, was my motion.
Mr. Ryan makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Norikus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And gentlemen, any comments this evening? Put it the order before we adjourn.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to point out that Man with a Plastic Sandwich at Theater West still has two more weekends, six more performances. Audiences are enjoying it, so if you have an opportunity, please come see the play.
Great. Thank you, sir. Mr. Norikus?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Would he, anything for the public?
No, nothing.
Okay. Henry?
Turn in your ballots.
Have till the 4th, right?
Fourth, right. Eight o'clock.
At any drop-off spot?
At any drop-off spot.
Okay. Thank you. The only thing I have, but it's, I think, something to think forward to, is, as the council knows and the public may know, we make appointments to the Planning Commission, and there's vacancies in the Planning Commission. Would love to have some applicants start thinking about applying. Depending on how the November election goes, there may be more vacancies than currently, and it'd be important to get some people into the process. So I would encourage citizens to, I guess you can draw down an application from the website and get it into Kathy Steer, the city recorder, so we can move on some appointments. Yes?
Just this afternoon, we received a phone call from Portland Television Station asking about the ban on all vacation rentals in the city of Lincoln City, and so I just want to inform you that there's still significant misinformation out there. Anyone who actually wants to know what the ordinances are about, there's a summary of the proposed ordinances. It's about on the second page or third page of the findings. Just about a page-long summary of what is actually proposed.
Thank you, sir. With that, let's adjourn for this evening. Thank you.